Regular meeting number 20 will now come to order. Before we begin the meeting, let's take the time to have a moment of silence for Columbus SWAT Officer Stephen M. Smith, who was shot this weekend performing his heroic duties as a member of the Columbus Division of Police. Let's pray for and think about Officer Smith, his family, friends, and all uniformed personnel who put their lives on the line every day to make our city, our state, and our nation safe. We've extended the invitation to Mayor Ginther to join us for this moment of silence. Mayor Ginther?
President Klein and members of council. This weekend, we were reminded of the service that our police officers and firefighters provide to us every day. We're also reminded of the risks associated with that service. Tonight, I ask each and every resident in our fine city to pray for SWAT Officer Stephen Smith and to lift up his family, his friends, and his fellow police officers and firefighters. Lift them up, recognize and celebrate their service and their sacrifice. God bless Officer Smith and his family. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor Ginther. Let's begin our moment of reflection and prayer. Mayor Ginther, will you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our moment of silence that we had for Officer Smith will stand in lieu of this evening's prayer. So get to business. Thank you for joining us, Mayor Ginther. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
This week's communications received by the City Clerk's Office are listed on the agenda and we published in the City Bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
Not at this time.
How about resolutions from members of council? Councilmember Brown? Councilmember Brown? Councilmember Harden? Councilmember Page? Councilmember Stenziano? President Pro Tem Tyson?
Yes, I do have one resolution this evening, and it is Resolution Number 0084X-2016. And I'm going to ask Ryan Johnson, the Director of the Office of Minority Health at Columbus Public Health, Makita Porter, the Chief Section for the Health Equity, Habu Noor, Somali health advocate, Jesus Orval, the Latino health advocate, and Lindsay Lechka, the Program Manager, to come to the podium, please. This resolution is to declare April of 2016 as Minority Health Month in the City of Columbus. And whereas the National Minority Health Month was first started more than 100 years ago as National Negro Health Week, in fact, Dr. Booker T. Washington dispatched a letter to the leading African-American newspapers in April of 1915 proposing the observance of the National Negro Health Week, arguing that health was the key to progress and equity and all other things, and that without health and long life, all else fails. And whereas Dr. Washington called on local health departments, schools, churches, and businesses, professional associations, and the most influential organizations in the African-American community to pull together and unite in one great national health movement. And whereas this observance grew into what today is a month-long initiative to advance health equity across the country on behalf of all racial and ethnic minorities, National Minority Health Month. And whereas Columbus Public Health created the Office of Minority Health to provide leadership in terms of reducing inequities in minority communities in Columbus and its surrounding areas focused on health awareness and disease prevention. Whereas the Columbus Office of Minority Health fulfills this mission by monitoring and reporting the health status of minority populations, mobilizing community partnerships and local action, developing policies and plans to support health efforts by informing, educating, and empowering our communities. And whereas the Minority Health Month campaign of 2016, in addition to partnering with various community organizations to present programming throughout the month of April, we will feature events that include Walk with a Doc, a mobile mammogram, mammogram screenings, community health forums, wellness events, clinical management of STDs, Find Your Part, Get Active Initiatives, cancer disparity presentations, as well as bringing attention to hypertension, substance abuse, domestic violence, nutrition, and wellness, and more. And whereas this campaign will provide information which will promote healthy living, showcase providers of grassroots healthcare and resources, highlight health disparities in minority and underserved communities, and ultimately working to find ongoing solutions to improve minority health year-round. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Columbus, this council does hereby recognize April of 2016 as Minority Health Month in the City of Columbus. I move for passage.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Adopted.
Thank you. Director Johnson, the floor is yours.
Absolutely. Thank you. On behalf of my colleagues that are here this evening, and Dr. Teresa C. Long, who's our Health Commissioner sitting in the back, I would like to say thank you. Thank you for this resolution of expression. And again, my name is Ryan E. Johnson. I'm the Program Director for the Office of Minority Health here at Columbus Public Health. The mission of the Office of Minority Health at Columbus Public Health is to provide leadership to reduce health inequities in minority communities of Columbus and its surrounding area, and that is definitely achieved through our four core competencies. Again, April is Minority Health Month. Minority Health Month encompasses a 30-day campaign of numerous activities designed to solicit the interest and participation of minorities or providers of health services to minority populations. Even though it's already April the 11th, there are still plenty of events that are occurring during Minority Health Month, and I just want to take a few moments to highlight just a few. Raising of America Community Conversations, April 13th and 19th. That's a community conversation focused specifically on race. Please join us on April 19th at the Health and Housing and Human Services Committee right here in Council Chambers. We will present testimony to Columbus residents regarding programs, initiatives, and services offered by Columbus Public Health as they pertain to reducing health disparities related to minority health. This conversation will begin promptly at 3:30. Somali Community Forum on April 22nd will be leading a focused discussion on cancer. Find Your Park Sebus, April 30th. Get outside, be active, reconnect with nature, and that'll be at the Scioto Autobahn. So again, for more information on the Office of Minority Health at Columbus Public Health or any information that I've shared with you briefly here this evening, please contact me, again, Ryan E. Johnson, (645) 7335, or REJohnson@columbus.gov. And again, thank you so much for allowing me to say a few words regarding the wonderful work of me and my colleagues.
On tomorrow, Tuesday, at 5 o'clock, I'll be hosting my regularly scheduled Health Human Services Finance Committee hearing and workforce development. Also next Tuesday, as Ryan mentioned, on the 19th, at 3:30, we'll host Part II of Minority Health Month hearing, and our Council Chambers will be focusing also on infectious disease during that hearing. And also on that same day, at 5:30 on the 19th, we'll be hosting our hearing on the Capitol Budget. It should be noted that each of these meetings are open to the public and will allow an opportunity for speakers. If there are members of our viewing audience who are interested in attending any of these hearings, please contact my office for any additional information at (614) 645-0854. There'll be a free day of dental services next Friday with the Fourth Annual Dentistry From the Heart, a free day of dental services to those in need. This will be with the help of the Ohio State University. They have put together an infrastructure to help several hundreds of people who need these services on this particular day. Last year, they were able to help over 200 individuals receive free dental care. This event will be held from 7:00 to 4:00 p.m. on the Columbus East Side at the Dixar Family Dental, 4241 Kimberly Place. And for more information, please contact www.dentistryfromtheheart.org. And now, I also want to publicly thank our City Treasurer, Debbie Cleese, her staff, Council President Klein, and our staff for their efforts in helping to make the Dollars and Cents Financial Literacy Summit that took place on Thursday, March 31st, a great success. Some of the sponsors include the United Way of Central Ohio, Heartland Bank, the Ohio Tuition Trust Authority, the Ohio Deferred Compensation, the City of Columbus Citywide Training and Development, and CME Federal Credit Union, and Fifth Third Bank. So, thank you very much. It was a success. That's all I have.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Tyson. Are there any comments by our elected officials? Auditor Dorian? City Attorney Pfeifer? Okay. Are there any requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance resolution from the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may we now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the City Clerk? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Finance Committee Ordinance 923-2016, Public Service and Transportation Committee Ordinance 865-2016, Recreation and Parks Committee Ordinance 662-2016, Technology Committee Ordinance 832-2016, Public Utilities Committee Ordinance is 196-777-90-805-822-2016, and Zoning Committee Ordinance 929-2016.
The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions. Clerk Blevins, will you now read the ordinance numbers of each into the record?
Resolutions of Expression 46X-85X and 86X-2016, Finance Committee Ordinance is 696-697-752-2016, Economic Development Committee Ordinance 866-2016, Public Safety Committee Ordinance is 140-800-819 and 821-2016, Public Service and Transportation Committee Resolution 69X-2016, Ordinance is 759-827-837-849-938-951 and 957-2016, Recreation and Parks Committee Ordinance 695 and 755-2016, Housing Committee Ordinance is 913-914-915-916-917-918-919-920-921-933-934-935-936-2016, Public Utilities Committee Ordinance is 212-677-724-757 and 806-2016, Judiciary and Court Administration Committee Ordinance is 824-892-894-896 and 897-2016, Appointments from the Mayor's Office Numbered A0021-45-46-47 and 48-2016.
We do have one speaker on the consent action portion of the agenda, Mr. Nathaniel Georgis. Mr. Wilkins?
Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins, Chairman of Solar Vacant Property in the North London Area. I just want to know, you know, how long 1673 of Tennessee Avenue, how long it has been in the land bank? I do remember that house was occupied one time or another since I lived in the area. Once again, that particular home had a garage again, but I would like to know what's going to be done with the property and what will be used for it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Director Shoney, could you follow up Mr. Wilkins after the meeting? It's the only speaker we have. Any other commentary from my members of council, colleagues, on the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion for approval of these items designated as consent actions? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Consent action passed. We'll now proceed with the second reading of 30-day tabled and emergency legislation. The first committee is the Finance Committee, chaired by President Pro Tem Tyson.
Thank you.
President Pro Tem Tyson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. I have one ordinance in finance. It's 0845-2016, is to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into seven contracts for the option to purchase small tools and accessories with F&amp;F Industries Equipment Corporation, WW Granger, Edco Tools, HD Supply, Fastenal Company, SID Tool Doing Business as MSC, and Goss Supply Company, to waive relevant provisions of the Columbus City Code relating to the competitive bidding process and to authorize expenditure of $7 to establish the contracts from the general fund and to declare an emergency. The Purchasing Office completed an evaluation of small tools, manufacturers that were frequently purchased over the past years within the city agencies. The solicitation stated multiple contracts would be awarded to maximize the selection and discounts for the highest quality small tools and accessories needed to maintain our daily operations. The City of Columbus has implemented an e-catalog system that is citywide as of January of 2016. The system allows city agencies to search for items available on UTC contracts and to compare pricing to get the very best value. The Purchasing Office accepted seven proposals from major corporations that provide a wide range of small tools that our agencies are currently, city agencies are currently purchasing. A waiver of regulations is being submitted to award the multiple suppliers as code does not envision multiple awards for the same items. And this ordinance will look at possibly $700,000 being used to purchase these small tools. And with that, if there are no questions, I would move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. May I now move to Health and Human Services? Yes, thank you. I have ordinance 0687-2016 to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to establish a purchase order with Capital Wholesale Drug Company for the purchase of pharmaceuticals for Columbus Public Health, to waive relevant provisions of the Columbus City Code relating to the competitive bidding, and to authorize expenditure of $100,000 from the Health Special Revenue Fund, and $55,000 from the Health Department's Grants Fund, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance is to purchase pharmaceuticals needed by Columbus Public Health TB and immunization programs. The purchase of these pharmaceuticals are needed in order to maintain patient care. A waiver of regulation is being submitted to waive relevant provisions of the Columbus City Code relating to the competitive bidding process and award the purchase order to Capital Wholesale Drug Company. Seeing no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. And the final ordinance in my committee is 0802-2016, to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to establish a purchase order with Moore Medical LLC for the purchase of flu mist, QIV nasal spray for Columbus Public Health, to waive relevant provisions of the Columbus City Code related to competitive bidding, and to authorize expenditure of $56,646.95 from the Health Special Revenue Fund to pay the cost thereof and to declare an emergency. Each flu season, the immunizations program at Columbus Public Health offers flu shots to the residents of Columbus. Columbus Public Health is eligible to purchase flu mist, QIV nasal spray from Moore Medical LLC for the amount stated on the Public Health Entity Agreement, which is the best pricing available in the state of Ohio for this vaccine. Competitive bidding is being waived in order to purchase flu mist from Moore Medical LLC at the price stated in the Public Health Entity Agreement. And I would ask my colleagues to move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. That's all I have in my committees this evening.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Tyson. The next committee is Economic Development, chaired by Councilmember Elizabeth Brown. Councilmember, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. The first ordinance we have in my committee tonight is Number 642-2016, to authorize and direct the city auditor to transfer an amount not to exceed $1,702,232.78 within the general fund, to authorize and direct the city auditor to appropriate and transfer $425,558.20 from the Special Income Tax Fund to the general fund, to authorize and direct the city auditor to make a payment not to exceed $1,702,232.78 in accordance with the Jobs Growth Incentive Agreement to the Ohio State University Wexner Medical Center, to authorize an expenditure not to exceed $1,702,232.78 from the general fund, and to declare an emergency. Seeing no questions from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
That's all I have in Economic Development. May I move to Environment?
Yes, may.
Thank you. Tonight in Environment, we have Ordinance 745-2016, to authorize the transfer of the 2016 general fund contribution to the General Government Grant Fund for the continuation of the 2016-2017 grant agreement with SUECO for the city's environmental stewardship program in the amount of $171,756, to authorize the transfer of the 2016 Water Operating Fund contribution for the same amount, in the amount of $69,897, to the General Government Grant Fund, to appropriate the sum of the aforementioned amounts, which total $241,653, to the General Government Grant Fund, and to declare an emergency. The ordinance was tabled on March 28th, 2016. I move to take it from the table and request a voice vote.
Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Stenziano?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Klein?
Yes, taking the table.
Thank you. I move for passage and request a voice vote.
Clerk call the roll.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Stenziano?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Klein?
Thank you, President Klein. That's all I have in my committees tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. The next committee is Public Safety, chaired by Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Brown, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. In Public Safety Committee tonight, we have Ordinance Number 0823-2016, to authorize and direct the Director of Public Safety to enter into a contract for helicopter avionics maintenance with TRM Avionics for the Division of Police, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the City Code, to authorize the expenditure of $35,000 from the general fund, and to declare an emergency. I'd also like to have Deputy Director Pasati, can you please explain why the Department of Public Safety has chosen to waive competitive bidding?
Council President Klein, Chairman Brown, council members. Waiver is requested to allow TRM Avionics, that's been working on the Division of Police helicopters, to continue to conduct any avionics work. TRM has purchased licenses from MD helicopters to conduct the work on the Garmin 500 systems that have been installed in the helicopters. Using another company will require an additional expenditure of funds for the company to become familiar with the avionics and the helicopters, and for the company to buy licenses from MD helicopters to conduct the work. That's all I have.
If there are no questions, I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Legislation passed.
That's all I have, Council President. Thank you, Deputy Director.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. The next committee is Public Service and Transportation, chaired by Councilmember Harden. Councilwoman Harden, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. This evening in Public Service and Transportation Committee, we have 0656-2016, to authorize the City Attorney to file complaints in order to immediately appropriate and accept fees simple and lesser real estate title interest necessary for the Department of Public Service to timely complete the roadway improvement Parsons Avenue Corridor, Livingston Avenue to Hosack Street Public Improvement Project, and authorize the City Attorney to spend funds from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. This ordinance is related to the Parsons Avenue Corridor from Livingston Avenue to Hosack Street project. The City Attorney's Office has contacted various property owners to offer payments for real estate so that the project can move forward. From time to time, these projects involve the use of eminent domain whereby a property owner and the city are unable to come to an agreement regarding the sale of the land or a piece of land for public use. Ohio law requests just compensation to be paid for the property owner, which is defined as fair market value, the amount of money that could be obtained on the market at a voluntary sale of the property. The City Attorney was unable to contact some of the owners of the property for this public project. Thus, this ordinance will authorize the City Attorney to file claim in court for common pleas to acquire the real estate. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Legislation passed.
Thank you. Next, I have 0723-2016, to amend the 2015 capital improvement budget to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to establish purchase orders for the purchase of asphalt, emulsion asphalt, concrete, and limestone and gravel aggregates per the terms and conditions of current universal term contracts, to authorize the Director of Public Service to contract with SUECO, to waive the formal competitive bidding requirements of the Columbus City Code for tipping of the SUECO landfill, and to authorize the Director of Public Service to expend $1,500,000 or so much thereof as may be necessary to reimburse the Streets Construction Maintenance and Repair Fund for personnel and equipment associated with the alley rehabilitation project, and to buy required commodities and pay tipping fees and to declare an emergency. This ordinance authorizes the city to rehab and resurface 35 miles' worth of alleys throughout the city. Additionally, it waives competitive bidding for the tipping SUECO landfill when the alleys are cleared out. First, I would move to take from the table and by a voice vote.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Stenziano?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
And now I move for passage and request a voice vote.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Stenziano?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Klein?
Next, I have 0725-2016, to authorize the City Attorney to file complaint in order to immediately appropriate and accept fees simple and lesser real estate title interest necessary to timely complete a pedestrian safety improvements Moller Road Sidewalk Public Improvement Project, and to authorize the City Attorney to spend funds from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
0871-2016 is similar legislation to authorize the City Attorney to file complaints in order to immediately appropriate and accept fees simple and lesser real estate title interest necessary to timely complete the State Route 3, Long Street, Cleveland Avenue, and Westerville Road Urban Paving Public Improvement project, and authorize the city attorney to spend funds from the Streets and Highways Bonds Fund and declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Lastly, we have 0926-2016, to amend the 2015 capital improvement budget to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with Strasser Paving Company in connection with the resurfacing program to authorize and direct the city auditor to appropriate and transfer from the Special Income Tax Fund to the Streets and Highways Bonds Fund to authorize the city auditor to appropriate within the Streets and Highways Bonds Fund and authorize the expenditure of $11,139,101.75 from the Streets and Highways Bonds Funds and to declare an emergency. This ordinance is Phase 2 of the city's extensive resurfacing program for 2016. The $11.1 million appropriated tonight will repair and surface 108 city streets and construct 750 ADA curb ramps in the northern and eastern parts of our city. In addition to the work being done in this phase, in Phase 1, this will bring the total number of streets being resurfaced to 268 streets. And we hope to conclude the resurfacing projects by September 30. Director, do you have any additional comments?
I do not at this time, thank you.
Thank you, Director. If no comments or questions from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
That's all I have in my committees this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harden. The next committee is Recreation and Parks. Councilmember Jaisa Page chairs that committee. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. This evening in Recreation and Parks, we have ordinance 0584-2016, to authorize and direct the transfer of $182,489 from the Recreation and Parks Operating Fund to the Recreation and Parks Grant Fund for Title III-A project grant match and to declare an emergency. This legislation is to continue to support CL AAA Central Ohio Area Agency on Aging and to support their staffing and the great work that they're doing for our agents' residents. I would first like to move to take it from the table and request a voice vote.
Clerk Colerole, my voice.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown? Harden? Page?
Yes.
Stenziano?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Klein.
Yes, remove from the table.
And I now move for passage and request a voice vote.
Second.
Clerk Colerole, my voice.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown? Harden? Page?
Yes.
Stenziano?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Klein.
Yes, legislation passed.
Thank you, President Klein. If I may move on to my next committee, Housing?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. We have ordinance 0603-2016, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into contracts with nine contractors to provide maintenance services on city-owned property being held in the land bank, to authorize the expenditure of $450,000 from the Land Management Fund to waive the relevant provisions of the city code relating to competitive bidding and to declare an emergency. There are no questions or comments, I move for passage. Sorry, President Protem Tyson?
Thank you, Councilmember Page. I just want to say I am excited about this legislation. I know that it really does help smaller minority businesses. These are the individuals who are getting these contracts, so this is exciting. As well as, I know that one of the smaller minority businesses on this list also work with our reentry citizens and just appreciate the work that they're doing to give individuals a second chance and to help them move forward with their lives. So excited about this legislation and the work that they're doing for our city-owned property. Thank you.
Thank you, President Protem Tyson. Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk Colerole?
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Legislation passed.
Thank you, President Klein. I have nothing further.
Thank you, Councilmember Page. Our next committee is Technology. Councilmember Stenziano chairs that committee.
Thank you, President Klein. Tonight in Technology, we have ordinance 0777-2016, to authorize the Director of the Department of Technology on behalf of the Columbus Public Health Department to modify an agreement with Streamline Health for the new document management system, Prime 3SG On Base System, in the amount of $49,790. To also authorize contingency funds in the amount of $22,497 for application, maintenance, support, and hosting services, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code, to authorize the expenditure of $72,287 from the Department of Technology Information Services Operating Fund and declare an emergency. This ordinance was actually part of an original agreement dating all the way back to 2008 and was most recently renewed by authority of ordinance 0758-2015 passed in March 30. The current vendor, Streamline Health, notified Columbus Public Health that they would no longer be able to support the services provided. In discussions, it was understood that ultimately, we needed to do an upgrade to a new architecture and product set from Streamline Health that would cost several hundred thousand dollars with very high annual maintenance fees. Because it was felt by Columbus Public Health that this was cost prohibitive, the department began looking for an alternative system solution. Fortunately, an opportunity presented itself that would allow the department to leverage an existing imaging product that was being used within the city, namely On Base from Prime 3SG. So, at the end of the day, it made a lot more sense to leverage a product that was already on state-term contract, that was already in use, and really going to be the best option to convert the data contained in the Streamline Health product, which only Streamline Health can do. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
That's all we have in Technology. If I can move on to Public Utilities, Mr. President? Thank you. Tonight in Public Utilities, we have ordinance 0647-2016, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a cooperative agreement with Columbus Public Health for participation in the Healthy Homes Program for the Division of Water and to authorize the expenditure of $300,000 from the Water System Operating Fund. This ordinance authorizes the Director of Public Utilities on behalf of the Division of Water to enter into an annual cooperative agreement with Columbus Public Health to provide funding for the Healthy Homes Program. The Healthy Homes Program seeks to help residents with lead poisoning prevention programs, hazardous product storage, and indoor air quality with the intent of creating a safer and healthier home environment. This one has a little history, too. In 1991, the EPA enacted the Lead and Copper Rule under the Safe Drinking Water Act, which requires tap water testing. For the past 15 years, the Columbus Division of Water and Department of Public Health partnered in a national pilot program to help eliminate lead exposures in homes. Unfortunately, that program expired last year, but both the Division of Water and Columbus Public Health desire to continue the program as a matter of public health. The goals of the program are for the Health Department to provide risk assessment services and reported cases of excessive levels of lead in children under six years of age via confirmed laboratory testing, and to provide education and preventative lead exposure services in the community. The risk assessments include drinking water sampling to determine the extent, if any, of whether or not drinking water from the home is a source of lead exposure. Obviously, this is a very useful program that should be continued in Columbus, and I'm happy the Division of Water and the Department of Public Health are continuing to work together with the goal of safe drinking water for all. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
The last ordinance we have in Public Utilities tonight is ordinance 0769-2016. This legislation authorizes the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a planned modification of professional engineering services agreement with URS Corporation, Ohio, for the Big Walnut Augmentation Rickenbacker Interceptor Lockborn Subtrunk, to authorize the appropriation and transfer of funds from the Sanitary Sewer Reserve Fund to the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Bond Fund and to authorize the expenditure of $1,104,972.92 from the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Bond Fund and declare an emergency. The original contract for the design of a 12-foot diameter tunnel included 60-inch diameter sanitary sewer. The first modification was for the redesign of the tunneling utilizing a 70-inch diameter along the original alignment, including a 60-inch diameter sanitary sewer. The second modification was for the design of the new alignment required by the 70-inch diameter tunnel along with the original 60-inch sanitary sewer. Modification number three is the completion of the value engineering study as well as engineering services during construction. If anyone has questions or answers, or questions or comments, I'll do my best to answer those. But if there are none, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
That is all I have in committees this evening, President Klein.
Well, that was the final piece of legislation for Regular Meeting Number 20. Are there any other comments or questions by my colleagues before we adjourn? We have a couple non-agenda speakers that will take shortly. And the interim will reconvene at 6:30 for zoning. May I have a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Clerk Colerole?
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
We stand adjourned. We'll take non-agenda speakers in about 45 seconds. So, sit tight, administration. Regular meeting number 21 will now come to order. Can I get a motion dispensed with the reading of the journal? Is there a second? Clerk Colerole?
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Are there any communications and reports received by the city clerk?
No, there are not.
First readings of 38 of the legislation?
No, there are not.
We'll now go to the zoning committee. Councilmember Page sits on that committee. Chairs the committee. All members sit on the committee. Councilmember Page, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. Before beginning the zoning agenda, I'll briefly explain the rules of council as pertaining to speaking before council on zonings and variances. We permit three speakers on each side, three proponents and three opponents, and we ask that they limit their remarks to three minutes on each side, and we provide an opportunity for rebuttal from the applicant. On the advice of the city attorney's office, we ask that anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against any council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will.
I will.
Thank you. Our first ordinance this evening is 0839-2016, to rezone 1317 Chesapeake Avenue 432112, being, I'm sorry, 43212, being .75 acres located on the south side of Chesapeake Avenue, 139 feet west of Northwest Boulevard from M Manufacturing District to AR Apartment Residential District. The applicant is Metropolitan Holdings LLC, care of David Hodge Attorney. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The city department's recommendation is approval, fifth by Northwest Area Commission approval. I would like to move to table this ordinance for one week to April 18, 2016.
Clerk Colerole?
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Legislation tabled to 418.
Ordinance 0840-2016, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3312.21D1 landscaping and screening, 3312.25 maneuvering, 3312.29 parking space, 3321.07B landscaping, 3333.15C bases of computing area, 3313.18D1 building lines, and 3333.24 rear yard of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 1317 Chesapeake Avenue 43212, to permit a 45-unit apartment building with reduced development standards in the AR3 Apartment Residential District. The applicant is Metropolitan Holdings LLC, care of David Hodge. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The city department's recommendation is approval, fifth by Northwest Area Commission is approval. Unless there are any questions or comments, I would also like to move to table this ordinance for one week to April 18, 2016.
Clerk Colerole?
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Tabled.
0855-2016, to rezone 1764 Northwest Boulevard 43212, being .15 acres located on the northeast side of Northwest Boulevard, 350 feet northwest of Chambers Road from R Rural District to R4 Residential District. The applicant is Kenneth Malika, care of Dow Volker Attorney. The proposed use is a four-unit dwelling. The city department's recommendation is approval, fifth by Northwest Area Commission recommended approval. Would just like to ask Ms. Pine for a short briefing on this ordinance.
This property was annexed into the city of Columbus back in 1976, and under annexation policy at the time, all properties came into the city as R Rural. For whatever reason, they did not follow up with a concurrent rezoning request, and so they're doing that about 30 years later, and staff feels that it's appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pine. Are there any questions or comments? Well, I would like to move for passage of ordinance 0855-2016.
Clerk Colerole?
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Passed.
And we have a companion ordinance 0856-2015, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3312.49, minimum numbers of parking spaces required, 3332.05 area district lock width requirements, 3332.15 R4 area district requirements, 3332.26 CE minimum side yard permitted of the city of Columbus Codes for the property located at 1764 Northwest Boulevard 43212, to permit a four-unit dwelling with reduced development standards in the R4 Residential District. The applicant, again, is Kenneth Malika, care of Dow Volker Attorney. The proposed use is a four-unit dwelling. The city department's recommendation is approval, fifth by Northwest Area Commission recommended approval. If there are no other questions or comments, I move for passage.
Clerk Colerole?
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Passed.
Ordinance 0877-2016, to rezone 541 Lazell Road 43081, being 0.04 acres located 297 feet south of Lazell Road and 674 feet east of Sankas Boulevard from LC3 Limited Commercial District to LC3 Limited Commercial District. The applicant is SBA Towers 9 LLC, care of Stephen B. Cheetum, attorney. The proposed use is a monopole telecommunications antenna. The city department's recommendation is approval, Far North Columbus Communities Coalition recommended approval. I would now like to ask for a staff presentation.
Good evening. This request, it's zoned LC3 Limited Commercial. The new LC3 Limited Commercial District removes a height limitation. The way that the height limitation was written in this current district was that it said all structures must meet a 35-foot height limit. Normally, we say building height of 35 feet, and monopole telecommunications are exempt from the height restrictions in the zoning code. So, had that restriction not been in there, they would have been able to construct this tower in this location. Staff reviewed this. They are complying with all of the other conditions and limitations for the development of a monopole telecommunications antenna. So, we feel that this location is appropriate and the zoning request is appropriate. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? I would first like to move to amend this ordinance to emergency.
Clerk Colerole, amendment?
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Amended.
I now move for passage as amended.
Clerk Colerole, is there a second?
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Passed.
Thank you. I now have ordinance 0886-2016, to rezone 1835 East 17th Avenue 43219, being .14 acres located at the southeast corner of 17th Avenue and Taylor Avenue from R2 Residential District to M Manufacturing District. The applicant is Evergreen Cemetery Association, care of David Hodge Attorney. The proposed use is to conform an existing industrial building. The city department's recommendation is approval, North Central Area Commission is approval. I now ask for a staff presentation.
This parcel is, it was developed in error. At the time that the building permit was issued for this industrial site, it was demonstrated that this parcel was zoned M Manufacturing, and this was just a recent error that we had discovered. This request, although it is not consistent with the North Central Area Plan recommendation for single-unit residential development, we feel that it's appropriate to secure proper zoning for the development on the property. And we feel that it's consistent with the development pattern that is east of Taylor Road, which is an undeveloped street. The Area Commission and Development Commission both recommended approval, and staff also recommends approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano Tyson, President Klein.
Passed.
And that is all I have, President Klein. And that is all I have, President Klein.
Thank you, Councilmember Page. I do have one piece in zoning that I will read, and that's 1339-2015 to rezone 2932 Bryce Road, being 6.92-plus or minus acres located on the east side of Bryce Road, 445 plus or minus feet north of the intersection of Refugee Road and Bryce Road, from R Rural to LM Limited Manufacturing District. The applicant is Green Earth Recycling LLC, care of Julia Kuttango, agent. The proposed use is a salvage and recycling operation. The city's department's recommendation is approval, the Far East Area Commission disapproval. I'd like to ask for a staff presentation.
The property is zoned in the R Rural District and is occupied by a salvage facility that recycles shingles. The use also occupies adjacent property in the village of Bryce. The occupant was issued a notice of zoning code violation for establishing the use without obtaining zoning clearance. The subject properly, property historically was used as a lumberyard that was annexed into Columbus in 1974. This request will establish a limited manufacturing district with appropriate use restrictions and development standards, including a 50-foot no-build zone, a privacy fence along the southern boundary in consideration of the residential uses south of the railroad tracks, and limit shingle grinding activities to an enclosed structure. The request is consistent with the land use recommendation of the Bryce tussing plan, which recommends light manufacturing and office uses. The limitation text places restrictions on hours of operation and also stipulates the location of the grinding equipment to be no closer than 150 feet from the south property line. Although the proposed limitation text provides restrictions for the recycling operation that were negotiated with the Area Commission and Development Commission, this rezoning will not permit the recycling operation. The recycling operation must be zoned manufacturing and must obtain a special permit from the Board of Zoning Adjustment. This rezoning request will establish a limited manufacturing district as recommended by the area plan and will permit the applicant to request a special permit from the Board of Zoning Adjustment to legitimize the recycling operation. The zoning code provides that when considering special permit requests, the BZA may impose such requirements and conditions regarding the location, character, and other features of the proposed uses or structures as the board deems necessary to carry out the intent and purpose of the zoning code and otherwise safeguard the public safety and welfare. Staff has concerns regarding the appropriateness of the recycling facility at this location, but recognizes that such use will require a special, a separate review process by way of the special permit application to the BZA. Additional conditions and limitations may be imposed during that process. Therefore, staff recommends approval of this LM Limited Manufacturing District to allow the applicant to pursue the necessary special permit. Be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Ms. Pine, what were the restrictions that were in the zoning text?
They have hours of operation restrictions. They have a commitment that the grinding, the grinding equipment must be in an enclosed structure, and it has to be at least 150 feet from the south, southern boundary of the property, and they also have a fencing commitment along the south property line.
So the city's recommendation for approval was premised on not only the limitations within the zoning text, but also the realization that the zoning request, which is separate from the BZA process that would allow for the use that's being sought, that the zoning change would be, is in conjunction with the Bryce tussing plan, area plan?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. And so the changing of the zoning being sought here to limited manufacturing is just that, and any sort of further operation for the facility being sought has to be done through the BZA to get a special permit?
That is correct. The specific salvage recycling use that they have proposed will not be permitted by this rezoning application. They have to get a special permit, and it has to be approved by the Board of Zoning.
Any other questions for Ms. Pine before we get an opportunity to hear from the applicant? The applicant, Mr. Kuttango? Please, yeah, please, yes, sorry. Come forward. If you just could state your name for the record, you'll have the opportunity to give us a presentation.
My name is Jim Kuttunio, and I operate Green Earth Recycling. I'll try and make it short. It's kind of repeat, but the property was annexed in '74, was run as a lumberyard since '74. No one said a word. We come in there. I went through the one stop. I called the state. I called Columbus. I called, for six months, I called everybody and got every permit possible to run a recycling yard. Well, since the office and the address is Bryce, everything falls in Bryce. Bryce doesn't have a building department. It reverts back to the state. State comes out, gives me occupancy permits for the building in Bryce and for the building in Columbus. Right there was kind of the screw-up, because before anything was on the property, we should have been in front of this board getting zoning that I would have known about if the state would have said, "Well, that's Columbus. You've got to go to Columbus." I would have went to Columbus, they would have said, "Well, we can't give you a building occupancy without having the proper zoning." You know, we move in there, we have to clean up the lumberyard, so it wasn't like we went into a residential area and moved houses to put in shingle recycling. So meanwhile, we start operation. Everything's fine. We're running for a year, no words, and we sub out our first grinding, because we take the shingles, we clean them, we grind them, they go back in asphalt roads. Not in Columbus, but they go back in asphalt roads. We actually shipped to Kentucky, but that's another thing. And our subs' machine was not functioning right, and we literally dusted the whole village of Bryce. First impression, worst impression. Then, since then, we got rid of him, we bought our own grinder. We grind when conditions are right. We haven't had any complaints since then of the dust. So, you know, I called EPA the next morning on myself, had them come out. They took an assessment of the area and said, "All right, first offense slap on the wrist, don't let it happen again." We haven't. So with this board, we're just after zoning so we can actually try to get to a legal standpoint with the zoning and the special use, and we're only asking this board to give us zoning that matches the adjacent properties. And that's going to allow us to move forward and get the special use permit, which will limit our size of pile, put other restrictions on besides just the restrictions we've already placed on ourselves. So if you have any questions for me, I'd answer them, but like I said, the main business is in Bryce. The shingles are actually stored in Columbus. I mean, in '04, there was a rail spur put through Columbus Rural Residential Area. No one said a word. So you can operate a train in residential area, but in a lumberyard, but you can't do manufacturing, so I'll answer any questions.
So part of your property is in this village of Bryce, and part of it's in the city of Columbus?
Correct.
And that's where the issue came, because the zoning is inconsistent for one or the other, and the permit was given from the state of Ohio for both. So the state of Ohio assumed it was one contiguous parcel within the same jurisdiction?
Yeah.
Talk to me, go ahead.
Would have been a lot easier to get zoning when there wasn't a piece of shingle on the ground, you know what I mean? And we didn't dust the village. That's why we get so much heat, because we did sub it out, and we had a...
Talk to me about the history of the property itself, when you tried to purchase it or in the process of purchasing it?
The property was annexed in '74. Major contractors was lumberyard. They owned it. They never updated zoning. They had a free chance to update zoning to limited manufacturing. They never went through with it. They've actually went out of business. Delta Marine was running. They started storing boats there, and there's just lumber, and boats was sitting everywhere when we moved in. The landlord that we rented from actually doesn't own the property, but he had a lien on the property, so somehow he was able to rent us this property. So we moved in, we just started cleaning up lumber and boats and getting rid of boats, and so we put all them stacked in the corner, and since then, the property has come up for sheriff's sale, for tax lien. So I bid on the property. I was, I won the property at sheriff's sale, but I haven't been able to close yet because they sold me the property for a lot less than the money they need to collect to cover tax liens. So now that's up in the air, because they sold a piece of property that doesn't cover all the tax liens, which I've gone back and said, "Okay, just whatever the tax liens are, I'll pay it, so we can get the property in my name. That way I can show people that I'm not trying to run from the pile." And it hasn't closed yet. So that's where the property lies, but for the last 40 years, it's been a lumberyard.
Okay. If you don't mind, or first of all, are there any questions for Mr. Kuttunio? If you just could step off to the side, because I want to give an opportunity for the speakers. There's a couple for, a couple against, and then give you a chance for rebuttal. The first speaker, I think, is you. You signed up? Did you sign up for a speaker? Okay. Well, we'll take that unless you want to speak for three minutes. Okay. The next speaker is Bruce Leinbach? Mr. Leinbach, Leinbach? Welcome to council. If you just could state your name, your address, any organizations that you represent, and you'll have three minutes.
Bruce Leinbach, 3045 High Street in the village of Bryce. Until the end of 2015, a member of the Bryce zoning board. And Mr. Kuttunio, I come to the village zoning 2013, 2014 to ask about the operation, and the zoning for the village of Bryce for that property was a limited manufacturing zoning, and so he's been more than compliant with the restrictions that we ask. Now, he did have, two years ago, this issue with dust in the village, and the resolution through that was a negotiated enclosure for the equipment, to move the equipment back away for both noise and potential dust issues. So he, he caught a perfect storm, an east wind, that just blew back into the village and made a mess for a day. But it's, it's been a back-and-forth arrangement to talk to him and to make sure that he's been in compliance with EPA and other zoning restrictions.
Okay. You have a minute and 30 seconds, so make sure you get an opportunity to say. Are you good?
I'm good.
Any questions for Mr. Leinbach? Thank you, Mr. Leinbach. Is Mr. Jeffrey Bond here? That's fine. Mr. Marshall, welcome back to council.
Green Earth actually started operating April 2013.
Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Marshall. If you just could state your name for the record, any organizations you represent?
Larry Marshall from the Far East Area Commission, also associated with the tussing block watch.
Please.
We've been okay with having the identical zoning as was for Delta Marine, the adjacent property, but that has not come to bear, all right? I want to make a couple of corrections. First off, it has come to my attention that Green Earth has not had a shredder on the premises since July of 2015, so therefore, there is no sound, there is no dust or whatever else. Instead, what it's developed into is actually a waste material, construction waste. If you look here, you're going to see an excess of 100 pallets additionally. As we look at the current stack, as you can tell from the snow, it was just taken the past couple of days, and all of this material here, those are broken-up pallets, which are basically stacked adjacent to and on the shingles. Shingles themselves are not going to burn, but when you have a, you know, a combustion of the pallets, that's going to heat the shingles up, and that's going to fuel the flame. You have a big problem, okay? Also, I'm going to ask that the case log be updated, because online, there's the October 31st, 1974 limitation text, not the, what was it, February 21st of 2015, the one that you're reading from? All right, so that's not online. Yes, sir? In the ordinance? Okay. So basically, want to refer to the marking plan, and a key thing in the marking plan is that, is perception, perception of negative, positive perception. We want to have a positive perception for our area, and when you look at operations such as this, this is not a positive thing for the tussing area, all right? We are not against the rezoning to the limited manufacturing, but what we want to know on is what is going to be there immediately. That's where the Far East Area Commission said not to. If you look at it, there's a 600-foot limitation. You can't have any type of residential or institution within 600 feet of the property line. You've got a subdivision, you've got apartment complexes. In addition to that, there is a kindergarten within 400 feet of the property line of this operation. So do we want? Yes, we're agreeable to that rezoning to the limited manufacturing. We are not agreeable to this occupancy. We feel it's a hazard, a life safety hazard, a fire hazard. There's no water. Township can't fight it. City can't fight the fires. There's no water there.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall, and I appreciate your service to our community as well with all the work that you do in the Far East and dealing, specifically in the public safety realm. Thank you for what you do. And I want to give, I have a question for Ms. Pine possibly, but also a question for you. Are you recommending that we vote no on the light manufacturing, but if someone else brings light manufacturing to vote yes? It's just, because that's the, that's the issue that I have with your request, and I'm curious to what your answer is, because either it's, either we change the zoning to light manufacturing and look at whether that's the appropriate land use, which I think we're in agreement on. I'm just not sure how we, as a body, could say, "No, we're against light manufacturing," even though we're okay with light manufacturing, and then if he would sell the property to someone else, and they came in and said, "We need to zone to light manufacturing," we now say, "Okay, it's okay to be light manufacturing."
Basically, what I'm going to say is that upfront, in actually September of 2014, we said that we are willing to do the identical with this as with Delta Marine, but there is a provision there with a relationship to the more objectionable operations, which include salvage junk, building materials, roofing materials, et cetera.
Okay.
All right? So it's very difficult to sit there and say, "Yes, we're going to approve this." If this had been limited manufacturing filed before, great, that would have been fine. But now we're looking at a double-edged sword. If we say yes, this is what comes in, and we don't want this here.
And Ms. Pine, on that point, is the additional material that is being alleged, and I saw your picture, assuming that it's there, is it, are there restrictions on that in the BZA permit if they want to recycle any other material beside shingles?
Well, first, I'd like to clarify that the limited manufacturing district text specifies that this one more objectionable use allows the processing of roofing materials, building paper and felt, including asphalt and composition. That is the only more objectionable use. So essentially, this limited manufacturing district is the same as the one to the east with this one use that does require a special permit. But yes, the Board of Zoning could impose further conditions on what exactly the activities would be limited to for this proposal when it goes before the Board of Zoning.
So the addition of the pallets that are being alleged, that they say they're on top of the shingles, is that fall within the limited zoning text? That's the first question. The second question, that if it does not, is that something that is addressed at the BZA?
It, it may be kind of classified under the roofing materials catch-all with the composition part, but I think that would probably be further looked into during the Board of Zoning Adjustment, where they could specifically say, "This is what you are allowed to do on this property." Does that answer your question, kind of?
It gives, it gives guidance.
Yes.
If this is a salvage operation, that means that you bring things... If this is a salvage operation, that means that you bring things in, you salvage what you can, and you ship what is salvageable out. All right? When you look at these pictures, it looks like a lot is coming in, because I got pictures from actually May of two thousand fifteen, or excuse me, two thousand fourteen, all right? But what's going out? What's being shipped out? If he hasn't had a shredder there since July of two thousand fifteen, he's not shredding shingles, which is what the initial application was indicating. So what is going out the door? Everything's coming in. He's got more shingles in. He has virtually doubled the size of this salvage yard with relationship to shingles. And I can show that by, you know, basically the pictures here.
And Ms. Pine, what is the limitation in the special permit at the BZA? Is it on recycling, or is it specifically on shingles that would be, that the applicant would need to seek at the BZA?
They'd need to be very specific with their request as to what exactly they're asking for in the way of their salvage operation.
So if the applicant sought shingles plus pallets, then the BZA would consider shingles plus pallets?
Correct.
And they would only seek shingles, then the BZA would only consider shingles, and anything varying from that would be a violation of the BZA permit?
And a violation of this zoning text, because we are specifically only permitting the one salvage operation for the roofing materials.
Okay.
In the original application, the applicant also included the term, other construction materials as may, we may in the future. Or he's lying himself.
I understand that was in the application, but I think there's a difference that we need to understand between what's in the application versus what we're voting on in the zoning text. And it sounds like the zoning text is limited to what, Ms. Pine? If you could restate that again.
Yes. It specifically says, in the processing of roofing materials, building paper and felt, including asphalt and composition.
So that's the zoning text?
Yes.
And then the applicant will then have to go to the BZA and talk about specific materials, shingles, wood, that he would seek, and that if the BZA would grant that or not, would be the BZA's determination?
Correct.
And that the standard would then be whatever the BZA says that is within the text of the special permit?
Correct.
Any questions for Mr. Marshall? For Ms. Pine? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Councilmember Harden?
Thank you, President Klein. In the rezoning request, there was, you said some about stipulations on a fence, for a fence to be built. Is that to reduce eye, line of sight for some of the, whatever's going on? Is that, there's something to the extent of on the south?
Yes, it's a screening provision, and I'm just looking for it in the text here. Bear with me. Let's see here. It's, I believe, in the part D of the text, fifty-foot, no build zone will be placed along the south side of the property closest to residential district. Also, the six-foot board-on-board fence from the rail spur to Village of Bryce line shall be maintained in good repair. So there's already a six-foot fence there, and they're going to maintain it.
Okay. So it doesn't permit line of sight onto the property? It's just a physical?
Correct, yeah. But the Board could always say they want a taller fence to shield the piles. They could also limit the pile heights of the materials, where specifically on the property the pile can be.
Got it. Thank you. Any other questions? Our second speaker is Jeffrey Bond. Welcome to council, sir. If you could state your name and the organizations you represent, you'll have three minutes.
If it please the city council president and council members, my name's Jeffrey Bond. I'm former president of Winchester Highlands Association off of Gender Road. I was a proponent for Southeast Area Plan with Rich Sinson Brenner back in the day. That kind of dates me. It's the last time I've been here is probably two thousand three. This property, I worked for Mr. Murray, who has an insurance agency abutting the property, a big two-story black glass building. It's worth probably a million dollars. Plus, it hasn't been developed out completely. I drew the conception drawings of it back in ninety-nine. We have to look out our back window at this pile that looks like either tires or a coal pile. It's thirty-foot high and huge. Doesn't seem to be going down any. And unfortunately, it's, you know, I have to look at it every day when I go into work, and it's an eyesore. The question here is, is there a better use for this land? And that's the only question you have here tonight, economically, environmentally, beautification, and beneficial to the abutting property owners and stuff. Is this the best use for this land? And the answer to that is clearly no. The variance is not a good option for all the above reasons. This is a pig in the parlor, not in the barnyard. And that's a quote directly from the Supreme Court of the United States on land issues. And it does give you a free rein to decide what you want as a community. I can say clearly that you do have decisions to make. And it's unfortunate that, you know, this is a schizophrenic issue with Bryce and Columbus all being tied together. I can't imagine, you know, building a commercial office building without having the zoning first. Well, how do you start and not have serious consequences? How do you start a proper like this, literally with huge thirty-foot-high story, three-story, two-story, three-story building of shingles, and then come back and try to make it kosher now without any consequences? I just don't understand. This is never going to be likely a sustainable operation. There's EPA suits, there's environmental court lawsuits, there's tax liens. I don't know how many employees it's going to create. It's very few, though, maybe ten at the most on a good day. He's renting the equipment. He's renting the property at this point. He's been rejected from the sheriff's sale. They gave him his deposit back. I just don't think for these reasons, you know, that this request should go through. And I would hope that you would decline the zoning variance. Thank you very much.
So, Mr. Bond, you think that the land should not be rezoned to light manufacturing?
In this case, no, because literally, it's going to be a burden on the rest of the community. And bringing up that, the fire was on Marion Road with the paper, one of the reasons that it was such an extreme event was that they did not follow the rules, that they weren't allowed to pile the paper so high. And in this case, he's doing the same thing with the shingles and other stuff. And the shingles won't burn, granted, if they're on a roof applied properly, installed properly. They've got a certain burn rate. But if you have an accelerant and get this started, they're like a tire fire, or they will be like a coal fire. You will not get it out. There'll be huge drainage coming off and oil that EPA would have to see.
I understand. I just want to make sure, your position is, you're against
Right.
limited manufacturing rezoning?
Right. And there are residents that are very close to the property, that may be in Bryce, but they're within just a few feet of the property, up and down a road that runs along the railroad tracks, sort of coming out of the town direct.
So your objection is not just to his property, it's just that it should not be rezoned to limited manufacturing?
It's an eyesore. It's an economic nightmare, and it's going to be a nightmare for Franklin County engineers and everybody to have to deal with someday down the line. And it could be a nightmare for the City of Columbus, as in a fire or something. He needs to at least be bonded for somewhere over a million to ten million dollars, just a, you know, licensed, bonded, insured. You know, we always ask those questions. It's a very serious issue.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Bond? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Derek Cranston? Mr. Cranston, welcome to council. If you just could state your name for the record and the organizations that you represent, you'll have three minutes.
My name is Derek Cranston. I'm representing my wife.
Representing your wife?
Yeah, she's sick and dead.
Oh, okay.
But first off, I'd like to thank you for letting me come and speak to you all. And I'd like to mention first that the City of Columbus has already filed a lawsuit against Mr. Cantuno. I'm not sure how to say his name, but just wanted to let you know that, that that's already existing. And on April two thousand thirteen, started something new that we didn't see coming. Green Earth moved into two-nine-three-two Bryce Road in April of two thousand fourteen. The shingle grinding started. Right off the bat, we had a disaster. A huge cloud of oily soot was blown over the village, coating everything, houses, vehicles, our garden, equipment, outside trailers, fences, children's toys, and our flowers and vegetables. Later that day, we saw that our pond was covered with a sludge. Our wildlife started to die immediately. This business should be rurally located so as to avoid any health issues. It is a detriment to the health of the land, toxic to wildlife, and a hazard to our health. It is a huge eyesore and will devalue our properties. The health and vitality of any wildlife is a strong indication of the health of the area. EPA took samples and said they found nothing toxic. Six months later, in October, my pond was still covered in sludge. No wildlife covered or recovered through April of two thousand fifteen. This year, well, I just have to state that on my own, I'm reading from what my wife, we did not hear, there are peepers. I don't know if you know what peepers are. We've been living there for, going on thirty-four years, and they're little frogs. And when this happened, they all stopped. So evidently, we felt that this dusting of whatever had gotten all over our property and our land had affected the wildlife to the point that we did not have them anymore. Please hear us. This industry doesn't belong in our backyards. That's the end.
Thank you, Mr. Cranston. Any questions or comments for Mr. Cranston before we have the applicant get up for rebuttal? Thank you. Mr. Cantuno?
We need to recycle roofs. When the shingle guys tear off a roof, it needs recycled. Whether it's here or somewhere else, we'll cross that bridge on special use permit. The pallets and the plywood they tear off your roof come to us in the same load. We do accept pallets and plywood as part of the roofing material. The pallets are stacked up, because a lot of them go to Columbus Fire Department, State Fire Department, have a church group coming out Saturday getting three hundred pallets. So we stack the pallets up, because I can't sell them, because they're a special pallet for shingles. Otherwise, I'd take them down to Marion Road, since all his burn up, and sell them for three bucks a piece. So we do accept wood as part of it, and we're going to bring that up in the special permit when we go through that process. Something else, when we got denied by the area commission, and then we had to go back to BZA, we actually tried to go back to the area commission. They denied us and said, we're done with you, we're done hearing with you, we don't want to talk to you. So, you know, I tried to reach out with them. This zoning has gotten drug out for two years, it seems like, year and a half. Not once has somebody come to me and said, hey, what are we doing? What's going on? We have actually stopped accepting shingles, because the fuel market has crashed, which our outlet is going down. So until we can further develop a new outlet that we are currently working on, we don't accept any more shingles. So the pile isn't getting bigger, but it isn't really getting smaller. It'll get smaller by a little bit this year, but not drastically. Next year will be the big year, once this new use comes in. As far as Cranston's, when you put human waste on top of the ground, and it runs off to your own foot-and-a-half-deep pond with tires in it, the natural wildlife's going to move away, because they've all moved over to our pond. And we have the geese and the fish in our pond. Your morning won't come fishing. But he's in violation of himself. He's been in violation for a few years. He won't correct it. So maybe that's where the peepers went, you know? I hear peepers. That's all I got to say.
So, Mr. Cantuno, what exactly are you seeking at the BZA?
Roofing loads.
And what does that include?
Okay, that includes about twenty-one different items. We are the only shingle recycler out there that I'm aware of. We actually pick our pet bottles or drinking bottles, they go in a box. Any kind of milk jugs would go in another box. All the shingle wrappers, the plastic wrappers, go in another box. All this gets bailed up. We don't make money off of it, because, you know, the plastic industry's crashing with the fuel market, too. So we sort these loads, which are pallets, wood, we get metals, aluminum. There's like twenty items that come out of these loads, literally. And all that's sorted and picked through different boxes. Once we got twelve boxes of the bags, it goes inside the building, gets bailed, and then we ship it off. We get the ridge vent. I mean, that's just, I can't even think of all the, but it's a roofing load. We do get some trash. We get homeowners actually throw trash in the dumpsters. You know how that goes. And we have a trash dumpster on site, so when that gets full, it goes down to the landfill. So there is wood, there's shingles. The paper and shingles are mixed. We don't separate that. That gets ground up together. All the nails are sucked out of the shingles with a magnet. So all the metals are recycled. Aluminum drip edge.
What about the notion that the pallets are on top of the shingle cycle, the shingle pile?
The pallets aren't on top of the shingle pile. The pallets are sandwiched next to the pile. We have talked to Unit Thirty-two, which is the Columbus Fire Department out that's going to handle if the pile would ever catch on fire. They have asked me this summer to put a separation between the two piles. We'll get that done eventually. Thorough township come out, took shingles with them, tried to burn them. It's very hard to keep shingles on fire. They hold a lot of moisture. There's actually a small pile of vinyl siding there we started collecting, which in turn, we don't accept any more. Probably, I won't even ask for it on the special permit. I just haven't hauled that off yet, because we actually had it for recycling. I took the first load out of there, and then the guy called back and said, hey, we can't take any more right now, because the fuel market crashed. And so we're kind of waiting on that to come back around, so I can get rid of that for free versus paying for it. So that slowly disappeared.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Cantuno? Councilmember Brown?
Would you speak to the issue you said about a lawsuit filed by the city?
Oh, City of Columbus, I was, for the zoning code, was issued a citation two years ago. Somehow, when it went through the sheriff's sale, it threw up a red flag. So they end up suing me. They sued the landlord. They sued the owner. They've sued workers' comp. Everybody that had a lien on the property, there's like twenty liens on this property, got named in the lawsuit. I met with them last Monday. We sat down with them. They are willing to postpone it to May thirteenth. And at that point, we'll just keep in communication with them as long as something happened where we fell through the cracks, because we were supposed to be on November's ballot. And I've been talking with code enforcement, and he said, as long as there's progress moving forward, we'll just hold off with the violation until we get it all resolved. Well, somehow, we fell through the cracks here in November, because we were supposed to be on in November. And with the sheriff's sale, I ended up getting sued. So, yeah. Columbus has got a lawsuit against me and twenty other people on the property.
What exactly are the code laws?
Improper zoning. Zoning. The land's never been zoned, so it's, yeah. And the first time Mark Wellington come out, he said, well, I never even knew this was Columbus. I mean, it's landlocked back in there. It sits down in the bottom. The only access is through Bryce and is through our property. So, you know, the first phone call I made when Mark come out was, hey, well, Columbus annexes us to Bryce, so I can be under one jurisdiction. And Columbus said, what's Bryce got to offer us? And that didn't go very far, so, yeah. But I get two health departments. I get two fire departments. You know, I get, I mean, I'm right on the line. I'm right on the line. I pay taxes to Columbus, employee tax to Columbus and to Bryce. So it's, yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Continuo? All right, thank you, Mr. Continuo. I think we're ready to move on a vote. I appreciate all the speakers coming down, and I appreciate the frustration by the speakers against, I'm going to recommend voting for the project because this is simply a rezoning to light limited manufacturing and that he'll have to sort out all the other limitations at the BZA. And I'm not sure what else is the more appropriate zoning than light limited manufacturing on this particular site, regardless of what the project is. So I'd like to move, if I can get a second, move to vote on, and, yeah, move for passage on this particular ordinance by voice. And it's been seconded.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Harden? Page? Stenziano? Tyson?
Yes.
President Klein?
Yes, legislation passed. Anything else come before zoning, Councilmember Page? Seeing none, can I get a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Clerk call to roll?
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
We stand adjourned. If members could just hold momentarily, because Ms. Donna Herring is here, she was called during non-agenda, but I think she just didn't hear her name being called. I'm going to give her the opportunity to have her three minutes. So Ms. Herring, please come down, and you'll have your three minutes to address council.